We're left.
Yep.
All right, we'll call it being in order at seven eleven. If we can all please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Uh, do a quick roll call, uh, Mayor Mosher's here, trustee LaFever.
Here.
Uh, trustee Prover.
Here.
Trustee Wolf.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Uh, D W superintendent Wolf.
Yeah.
Yeah. Treasurer DuSette.
Here.
And, uh, Clerk Quaid.
Yes.
All right, only one that's absent is Attorney France. Uh, we'll be holding the public hearing open shortly after we hear first from Jake Elionello and then from Bruce Robinson on the tree policy. So, first up, Jake?
Yeah. As you, as the board may be aware, I've been working, um, with the mayor and we've been pursuing this New York State water grant. I discussed that with the board, um, several meetings ago. And, um, we've been working with Municipal Solutions, the municipal advisors at the village is working up on this water project, um, to prepare all the items that are necessary for this application. It has to go in on September fourth, which is coming right up, and they're trying to get it, um, wrapped up by the end of this week, hopefully. And it's Rose, I think, who will go over some of the items that Mary had requested on that, but, um.
They've already been sent last week.
Okay, okay, so, um, there were some items that they needed from us, and among those, well, let me step back. We, the, our original involvement in this project started in two thousand thirteen, and at that point, a project description was written, a project with scope that was approximately a three-point-seven million dollar job. And that scope has kind of moved around a little bit as the project has evolved over several years. Um, last year, two thousand fourteen, the village didn't, um, didn't end up receiving or being awarded, um, what you guys deemed acceptable funding opportunities for the project. It was going to be too expensive with the, the, um, funding packages available, um, except for the six-hundred-thousand-dollar C D B G grant. So, um, as part of the C D B G process, the village had to send out a request for proposals, for engineering proposals. We responded to that, the full proposal that covered the entire job, the entire three-point-six million dollar job. And in two thousand fourteen, when you were awarded, um, a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, but not enough money to do the rest of the project, our office was asked to, to prepare a letter that would, um, explain what portions of our original proposal would be necessary, or what dollar values would correspond to us completing the smaller scoped project, the six-hundred-thousand-dollar project versus a three-point-six-million-dollar project. So, we, we did prepare that letter. It was December, dated December eighth, two thousand fourteen, shortly after we finished writing the phase-one engineering report related to that C D B G project. And that was countersigned by the mayor at the time, which was Mayor Pritchard. So, our original proposal was never, our original full proposal for the three-point-six-million-dollar project was never executed by the village. It's just this letter that said we'll use a smaller portion of it. One of the items necessary for this grant application at this point is an executed engineering agreement for the project that we're applying for. And as, as we've worked with the village and developed the scope of the project that, um, to be submitted to the funding agency, um, the scope of the project has, you know, we looked at what is it going to take rolled forward to two thousand seventeen construction costs for the full project, and we looked at some reduced project scopes to try to make it more affordable, basically, as we worked with the village. And the project scope that I believe we've settled on and directed on, and I believe that's been discussed with board members, Dan, how much do I need to go over on that? Would you like me to explain the full scope of what we're proposing, um, for this grant application?
Well, as we discussed at the roundtable here, that we were going to, originally, the original plan was to do the full three-point-six-million-dollar scope, now I've been over four million with two years later for updated costs. And so, we've been talking briefly about just doing Kelly Summit, rehabbing that and that transmission line through here. The original scope included doing the transmission line all the way up to the reservoir, um, in regards to, well, we had a meeting, Rick, myself and you and your father and John and Tom.
Talked about the operational.
What was this?
This was, what, was it last week?
I think we were.
Two weeks ago.
It was a week or two weeks ago when we had that meeting? It was the same week as the board meeting, right? Was that Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, somewhere between, yeah.
Yeah.
And basically, there were some, you know, if the village wasn't going to do the whole project and it was going to be scaled back, there had to be some operational things, um, you know, we had to work out how the system would work. And, and so, the scope of the project that, um, we kind of narrowed down is, is what, meets the goals of the project, assuring the safe water and inadequate water supply, was to rehab Kelly Summit Springs, which is being done with the C D B G funds. So, that work is, um, when the environmental review wraps up here, hopefully will be, be being bid out this fall and this, uh, this early winter, and all that work will be completed before the end of next summer, um, October, basically. That has to be closed out by next December. The metering is all part of still what's going forward, and that's all part of the C D B G project, all the residential metering and then several bulk water meters, um, which will allow the village to, to get a complete picture of how much water they're making, how much their success with piping in the village, and how much is being, um, sold and then how much is being overflowed at the tank if that's. So, then, um, the final piece of this, this project that's being proposed for the New York State Water Grant is to build transmission main from Kelly Summit through to the village boundary instead of all the, the tank. It will tie into the existing village distribution system, just like the existing spring transmission mains do. And also, it would tie, um, from Koba well out to three fifty-three. So, um, it would be a substantially smaller project. Our, our cost estimates, um, we worked all the numbers, it comes out to a, um, it's a paper, it comes out to just over a two-point-five-million-dollar project. Instead of a, instead of a four-million-dollar project, um, it's, you know, there's some substantial savings because essentially what the village would be doing is, um, instead of putting more money further out on the line from Mayo into the village or into the Koba well area, um, that branch of the system, you'd be focusing on upgrading the Kelly Summit Springs, getting them to reliably produce a hundred gallons a minute, and there's potential, to actually rate the plant for slightly more than that, potentially as high as a hundred and fifty if the health department's willing to go along with it. And, and then have a brand-new pipeline that brings that reliably to the village instead of this hundred and, hundred-and-twenty-year-old pipeline. And Koba well would be connected with new piping. So, now you have, uh, two of your three water sources connected to the village with new piping, and those two sources are likely able to provide all the water the village needs instead of spending, um, you know, the difference between two-point-five and four-minute, another one and a half million dollars to run pipe, pipeline in it, um, out to the, out to Mayo Springs plant. I mean, that's also some of the more difficult pipeline to rebuild, um, because of the location it's in right now. So, anyhow, to wrap this all together, basically, the scope of the project went from three-point-six to possibly four, you know, down, it was at six-hundred-thousand or six-hundred-fifty-thousand last fall, and now we're talking about a two-point-five-million-dollar job. So, it's appropriate for us to revise our engineering proposal because our fees will be reduced somewhat because the cost of the project went down.
Well, it's after the six-hundred-thousand.
It, the two-point-five-million-dollar project includes the six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, so they're, what you're really, you're, yeah, you're going to, to New York State Water Grant Program, you're saying, this is my total project, I already have six-hundred-thousand committed by C D B G, and I need this difference, and, um.
But you need an agreement signed.
Right, but at this point, we need an agreement signed, um, as part of the application process, and also, um, in that agreement, one of the extra engineering tasks in our original proposal was to, was to provide engineering, um, coordination for a D W S R F full application. Well, this New York State Water Program Grant Application is essentially the exact corollary. It's the same paperwork. I mean, in fact, as Rose probably saw, some of the forms, I think they forgot to cross out D W S R F and put New York State Water Grant Program. So, it's, we're doing that same work. So, really, in order to even be doing this work to file this application, we should be, you know, we either have to revise that letter that was written in two thousand fourteen or, or if this is the appropriate time to get you guys to sign the full, the full engineering services agreement for the project.
And they didn't do that before?
Yes, the, the, the board and mayor previously didn't sign that full contract.
What was, what was the reason for that?
They didn't have, they hadn't had any funds yet committed to the project, so they didn't have any money to do the project, and I think they were just kind of waiting to see if they were going to get the funds before they signed the form. We, basically, our form, our firm was notified that, you know, after they got the quotes in and reviewed, then the board wanted to select us, but then we just didn't end up getting a signed contract in the mail. And ultimately, I believe I see what they were doing when they, um, asked us to just give them a letter that scoped it down. You know, our original proposal was, um, was five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars, the total engineering, estimated engineering fees for the job, and the C D B G portion was going to be much smaller, I believe it was, um, because that's only a six-hundred-fifty-thousand dollar project, it was.
Hundred thirty-three.
Hundred thirty-three?
I think it was a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Yeah.
For a month?
Yes, a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, um, it was much smaller, obviously.
So, what's it going to cost us, then, to do this?
Our bond, so if you have the two-hundred, we have two-point-five-seven-five, then minus the six-hundred-thousand, we have one-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-five-thousand is how much we're, the project would be at that point in time. Then the D W S R F, or excuse me, that's not that one.
It's, yeah, it's not hardly worth mentioning, but B E C did give the village eighteen-thousand.
Yeah.
And Southern Tier West gave five-thousand, which matter particularly because those show up as co-funding, which helps us get points when we score the project.
In regards to like, what, the actual bond would be is about seven-hundred-and-eighty to seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand?
Yeah, the, the, the village did do a bond resolution, I believe, last.
Last August.
Last, uh, two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
So, the, the village has an existing bond resolution, and I believe from speaking with Mary Chapel, there would be.
That's the bond resolution that she asked me to forward.
Okay.
There would be no need to revisit that because it, the bond resolution was high enough to authorize this project. And, um, if it had been too low, then it would have had to be revisited, but because it was for, in excess of the proposed project at this point, um, there's already a bond resolution in place.
So, what we're looking at is about sixty-five dollars per E D U, which is per single household customer. So, a business or a school, you know, say there are ten E D Us and you're going to take that times ten, and that's an annual increase. So.
The board has some flexibility over how they handle that.
Right.
Right now, I believe, you charge, I want to say on the order of about a hundred dollars a year, more for a commercial user than a, than a residential user. And the funny is, he might come back and ask us to do a, what they call an E U analysis, and that would be where we actually have to try to show this or what, these are what the commercial users in town use, the industrial users, um, institutional users like a school, and then this is what an average household uses. That's very difficult to do without working meters, um, more or less impossible. So, that's why we haven't pushed forward with that. At this point, we can say there's five-hundred-and-thirty plus or minus a few water accounts, and you can take the, the total project cost and, and divide it out among five-hundred-and-thirty. Yeah, it might, they might charge a few dollars a T V on, choose to push it more for your larger users.
Because the full scope, essentially, we're looking at, we did the full four million, I think we're looking at.
Hundred and twenty-three.
Hundred and twenty-three per E D U. So, after speaking with Jake and Mark and John, feel that we can just use Kelly Summit as our main water source, and we have Koba well, and God forbid if we ever were in a bind, could use Blackwater well, but then that would be a boiling water effect, but just saying, if we were ever in a situation like that, that's where it would go. So, to use Mayo or, yeah, Mayo and Canyon Springs is.
Yeah, I mean, they would still be online, they'd be connected. We have to run a pipeline from Koba well out to three fifty-three regardless, and so, because the vault for Mayo is right there, we would be picking up Mayo.
Yeah.
So, Mayo Treatment Plant would continue to function just like it is right now.
Right.
But if there ever was a cash traffic line failure out there, at that point, you'd have to either repair it or, at that point, abandon that branch of the system, which is, you know, that would be a, a cost decision to make at that point. But, um, you know, the village did a rudimentary, um, water demand test, because we don't have a great metering hell, and, um, I think you said it came out to, we figured it came out to about eighty-three gallons a minute.
Eighty-three gallons a minute, yeah.
During the, the demand portions of the day, not even over a twenty-four-hour cycle. And, and, uh, if the spring plant is, well, I have it rated at a hundred gallons a minute twenty-four hours a day, um, it seems, it's just common sense when you work the numbers, seems like we're going to have plenty of water.
Right.
What's happened in the past is your springs haven't, right now, they're making over a hundred gallons a minute each set, but they haven't maintained that in the fall and into the, um, early winter. And this project, it ain't that establishing that, that a hundred gallon a minute, which is what the filter plant's rated for, so that you always have that reliably coming to the filter plant, producing that capacity. But anyhow, that, so, this engineering, um, engineering proposal, we, we reworked the numbers to reduce them down since the project scope came down.
So, in order to do this, to try and go for this grant or whatever, how much is that going to cost us to just apply for it, to have you do the?
The grant application, I believe Mary Chapel said, let me just double-check here, I have, um, there it is. And, and the thing is, as much of the work that's being done for this, um, water grant application additionally, um, it's kind of the same work we'd have to do if we were doing a D W S R F application. And if we were to not get this water grant, because the village wasn't successful in that, rather than, um, the hope is that, um, the hope is that the, uh, what the state is trying to do with this program is clear up some of the projects that are scoring very high on the D W S R F intended use plan. And so, if we don't get money, maybe other projects that are above us on the funding list will be cleared out because of this money, and then we would move up on the D W S R F list. So, um, and that's usually finalized, I believe, in like November. So, I mean, we could know fairly quickly if we didn't get the New York State grant, New York State Water Grant, maybe we move up on, into, into a hardship funding line, above the hardship funding line on the D W S R F, which is a very similar program. Either way, it's sixty percent of the project cost up to two million dollars grant, and then, um, then there's subsidized interest available. So, um, this application, it, it's not like we're going to have to reduplicate the work if we don't get the water grant and we apply for that, we'd be able to use all the same information. But, um, I think she had told us approximately ten-thousand dollars, you know, when we prepared the, um, engineering proposal, and then our fees, um, our fees are going to be quite a bit less than that, um, probably in the order of five thousand to prepare these applications. And, uh, obviously, if, if we do get funding through one of these two sources, those fees are going to be reimbursed as part of the project.
So, you need a resolution stating that, um, giving the mayor, uh, the authorization to sign the attached short form of agreement dated effective August one-fourth. This will then serve as an engineering services agreement for you guys to proceed with the work, correct?
Yes, that's, that's what we're asking for, and, um, that's the cover letter, and I have the contract here, which has the, it has a statement of qualification, which is the same statement we prepared in two thousand thirteen, or two thousand fourteen, May two thousand fourteen, where we originally wrote this proposal.
Okay.
Scope of work. This describes the type of tasks we're doing, designing plans or specifications, so that really didn't change. Project schedule, um, we updated that to reflect the C D B G project, and we, um, I put in dates that I could with, with what would happen with this New York State Water Grant or D W S R F, but without knowing if we'd get that money or when they're going to let us know about that money, hard to project, but we're talking probably construction in two thousand seventeen.
Correct.
In the best-case scenario, maybe late two thousand seventeen, and not even two thousand eighteen, depending on when they, they would notify the village. The project's so much smaller as far as the linear feet of pipeline that it, it fits into one construction season a little better now than when we were talking about the much larger project. Um, and then schedule rates and, uh, fee proposals, so that's really, those two appendices are the ones that I updated today.
But in bottom line, in order for the project to continue, we have to have this resolution, correct?
Yeah.
The six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant?
No, the six-hundred-thousand-dollar project is, that's going ahead, that's already, yeah, that's.
Then what's, what project does this, this point on?
This covers, this proposal, um, covers all the same, it, it's not in addition to that six-hundred-thousand, it includes that six-hundred-thousand. That was previously exerted out because he didn't want to hire us to do all the rest of the project. But this proposal, it, this is in addition, it references back to our original proposal, references that letter written in, um, November of two thousand fourteen, and just explains, this is, this summarizes the total fees for the whole job, including that six-hundred-thousand-dollar job.
So, this is basically, oh, we're going to sign this, and this is?
This should take you through to the end of the project.
But this is that fifteen, roughly fifteen thousand dollars is what it's going to cost us?
No, 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 this is, this is our, that, that's the part that would be for us to do this application. The overall engineering proposal, um.
Four-hundred and.
Is four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars to do the, all the engineering services for the entire job, um, which include, um, preliminary engineering, which was work that was done, um, in two thousand thirteen primarily on this project.
You weren't paid on this portion, right, do you?
We paid some, yes.
Yeah, that, that twenty-five thousand, I think you paid us that.
Yeah, that fee that you're talking, though, that four-hundred-and-ninety, that's only if the project's.
Yeah, it gets funded and goes forward.
Right.
The C D B G portion, which we said was a hundred and thirty-three, the village has already hired us on, and we are, you know, starting on that project. We've done.
This fifteen thousand is just for Jay and, or, for, to do the application.
Right.
Yeah, it's one of the itemized tasks on other engineering is the D W S R F application, or, which we're basically substituting the New York State Water Grant.
Are we budgeted for this, what's involved, to do this?
No, we have to find money in a water fund to, to do it.
Did the, did the village, I know in two thousand fourteen, when the G W, or the C D B G project went forward, um, the estimate on that was six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and there's six-hundred-thousand-dollar C D B G grant, and the village had talked about, the village had talked about taking.
We talked about taking, uh, we'd be funded.
Local funding to do that fifty thousand if it became necessary, if the project did cost the full six-fifty.
Right.
But I didn't, I don't know the statistics exactly where that stands with the village.
We haven't done any.
And that, that local bu, that local money may not be necessary if you get the D W S or the New York State Water Grant funds, it would basically, we're telling them, this is the whole project, we already have six-hundred-thousand, we need everything else.
And then everything else would just go bond.
Okay.
And then everything else would just be through the bond.
What's not grant?
What's not grant is bond, and then that everything could be paid out.
Yeah.
You'll have to figure in, I don't know if the legal attorney, the bond attorney and so forth.
Our, our, the, the, our project estimate, where we're saying this is a two-point-five,
Try and draw a figure.
That.
Right.
Yeah, let me just look to that page. It's, it's two-point-five-seven-five, two-million-five-hundred-seventy-five-thousand. That includes, what that has is a construction subtotal and a construction contingency, which adds up to a construction total. And then it includes a line called E L A C, which is engineering, legal, administrative, and project contingencies. And so, that includes, our estimate of five, of two-point-five-seven-five million includes all legal fees, all administration fees, that, that's the complete project, that's what we're estimating it will cost.
Bottom line, in order for us to go forward with the project, we have to, we have to have this, right?
Yeah, ultimately, we need to be hired, and our liability insurance company doesn't like this work, can't jump in the balance of the contract.
There's money in the water, but it now, Dean, here now, off in.
The water, how much money is in the water now?
I'm not sure if I follow that question. I mean, are you asking how much?
How much money in our, is in our water account?
Well, right now, you don't have a lot because, in the actual money.
Yeah.
Because your water is divided up into four quarters. So, you're looking at, uh, about eighteen thousand.
So, it, it goes up and down throughout the year.
Right.
But that's your, that's your annual operation rate as well.
Well, what happens, we have all the bond payments right at the very beginning.
Yeah.
What we end up doing on a somewhat normal basis is having to transfer money from general into water and then pay it back.
By the end of the year, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty routine, we need to do that.
Because of the way that money comes in.
Right. It's not like taxes, that's all at once.
Correct.
It's quarterly.
If we pay this out of the water account, do you see us being able to pay it back by the end of the year?
I'm hoping, I mean.
Sounds a bit like he's a liar, Bill.
Well, no, I mean, are we taking payroll and stuff out of that now, too?
Right. But I'm.
Because you've got extra payroll coming out of that now, right?
No, I was just saying, not payroll, payroll hasn't changed it that. Everything's still the same, it's just the project.
You want all the water effort, is that all that pay, I mean, why all the?
No, there's a portion, I mean, because you have water operator, does however much for water, and then working on streets, it's all budgeted that way, it's not all just, I want the fund.
The only, I mean, I, out of our job, our engineering fees on the C D B G portion would be, there'd be billings expected still this year because we're actively working on that portion, um, and then this, I'm saying, estimating fifteen thousand for this grant application, but we would not be starting any design on the big project until next summer.
Just cutting to the serious, if we don't do this, we lose a funding cycle.
Right.
We don't, we're not in the game, we're screwed.
All the work we put forth is just.
So, really, I don't think we have, you have two choices, but one, one is pretty bad.
That I understand, but I wasn't part of the whatever meeting that was here, so I'm lost as to what we're talking about here, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
You understand that, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the New York State Water Grant Program has, is expected to run for three years. In its first year, they've committed fifty million dollars to water projects.
We should call it.
And, and, um, there's, you know, the program will still be running for two more years, but they, the rules are not, you know, it's not like they guarantee or help any set of rules or qualifications, and we meet the qualifications right now, we'll apply.
All right, so, for, first part that you need, so, I'll make the motion that, uh, have, that I, the mayor, have authorization to sign the short form of agreement with M B A Engineering, dated effective August twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. This will serve as an engineering services agreement, uh, with M B A to proceed with the grant application and the work period.
Have this, the contract, the new job.
Can I have a second?
I'm so good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Word, did you say that?
Yeah.
It's unanimous, carried and approved. All right, and then the last part you need is, uh, resolution with reference to the proposed Village of Cataragis, Cataragis County, New York, N Y S, Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Application. Rose, you said I need to read this?
Uh, well, just, yeah.
Okay, so it states, whereas the Board of Trustees and the Village of Cataragis has determined that it is in the village's best interest to apply for funding to assist in the financing of its wastewater improvement project, and whereas affordability for the village's residents and property owners is a significant concern in advancement of the proposed project, and now therefore, be it resolved as follows, one of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cataragis authorizes municipal. One of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cataragus authorizes municipal solutions to prepare an application for funding through the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. Dash, New York State Water Grants. Uh, the village board authorizes, is this gonna be myself or for M B A?
Uh, it's not, it would authorize you to sign the application.
Okay, so, the village board authorizes the mayor, Dan Moser, to execute the application for New York State Grant Water Grant Assistance. Uh, this resolution shall take effective immediately, dated for today. Can I have a motion? Oh.
I know that early on when they did mention wastewater.
It just needs to say water?
Yeah, I believe so.
Clean water?
Did, did Mary prepare the?
Yeah, I, I didn't read through it.
Yeah, um.
It should just be water?
It just says, uh, it's for, to apply for funding to assist in the financing of its wastewater improvement project.
They should say it's Water System Improvement Project.
What do you want it to say?
Water System Improvement Project.
Okay. I don't need to read that all over, do I?
No.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'm second.
Rick seconded it?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, carried and approved. Um, do you need me to, so you'll draft this up and then we can sign it for them tomorrow?
Yeah, yep, and, uh, Jake, do you have the verbiage on your motion, the first one?
Um.
Yeah, it's right here.
I didn't have specific, yeah, I think there's a sentence in there.
Okay, and then I can get it back to you, one second.
That's exactly where, right from.
Thank you.
Alright.
This is the short form of agreement, this is the signature here.
You need to sign it right now.
You don't need to sign it right now necessarily, but we'll need to, to marry Chapel as soon as possible, but she doesn't leave at this.
Now, Rose needs to, Rose needs to. Does Rose need to know the rest of that?
Um, no, I believe so. They have not asked us that. The village sealed it, right?
You're signing with your right hand, you usually sign with your left.
No, you don't.
Hmm.
And what is today, today is?
It is the twenty.
There you go.
I'm getting, Rose to, Rose, would you like me to just make a copy and mail it to the village?
Uh, if that's easier for you.
Whichever works best for you, I can do that.
Is that everything?
Yep. I believe that's everything, unless anyone else has any questions?
Hope I have any questions? Thank you, Jake, for everything as always.
We'll get this grant application and, uh, we'll let you know, we, we haven't been told when they're gonna announce any of the results of this grant application. The D W S R F program, which is very similar, the applications go in May and they find out in November, but I have the impression this program might be expedited quite a bit.
Yep.
That type of, so we should hopefully hear, um, fairly soon.
With that, we're, we're taking very much of the comment out.
They won't be there for it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Okay, um, this is Bruce Robinson.
I appreciate it.
Uh, yes, I am, I'm Bruce Robinson, I'm a consulting forester and I, uh, work with trees wherever, but, uh, I have, uh, uh. Some of you may remember, uh, I first did work for the village, uh, in nineteen ninety. We did the evaluation of the trees, uh, for the village, uh, back then. And, uh, the, uh, uh, what I want to just, uh, because time goes along and, and, uh. Some of you probably have never even seen this. Uh, but, uh, when, uh, whenever a storm hits, it becomes very apparent that trees are, uh, have a certain risk in a community. And that's when the most costly time for doing tree work happens after a storm. And, uh, so the alternative to that is to have a planning process where you're dealing with some of the trees, uh, on your own time. I mean, on your own schedule, uh, so that, uh, you're not always working with the, uh, either a, an emergency contract situation or the power line's down, things like that. So, uh, that was the motivation that began the program, uh, in nineteen ninety. Basically what we did, we looked at all of the sites in the village. And we're not just looking at trees, in order to develop a plan, you need to know, uh, what trees ought to be removed, what trees, what the condition is of trees. And what replacement process for the trees. Ultimately, uh, you will end up with fewer and fewer trees because they're just not being planted. So, uh, we, we looked at, uh, about, uh, one thousand sixty sites where there either is a tree or a tree could be within the village. And of that, uh, uh, one thousand sixty sites, there were five hundred and forty trees back at that point. My guess is that there are fewer today. And, uh, the, the purpose of, of developing a management plan for the village is, uh, simply that. You're making replacements, you're making removals, and by doing this on a site basis. Some trees are in poor locations and when they're removed, they should not be replaced. So it, uh, a plan tends to help explain, uh, your work to citizens. And if somebody has a tree that's cut down, uh, they want to have a, a tree replaced, if it's legitimate for a replacement, that's fine, that, that's part of the plan. But if it's not part of the plan, you have some neutral ground so that you're not just spending all of your time arguing about whether a tree should or should not be at a particular location. Uh, and, uh, by working with sites, uh, we are able to, uh, identify, uh, a goal right from the beginning of how many. We, our goal is to have every good site fitted with a good tree, an appropriate tree. Sometimes smaller trees under wires, um, columnar trees where there's not wide space. Uh, there are lots of variables and we don't have to get into all of that kind of thing. Uh, my purpose is really to, uh, remind you that, uh, uh, there, there was a, a program twenty five years ago. Uh, and, uh, if there is a desire to, uh, review that, it would be, uh. This would be an appropriate time to do that, so, um. With this plan, by dealing with sites, uh, we can give you all of the information of, uh, if you're looking for a particular address. Uh, you can simply look in the plan and know whether there is a tree there, if there is a tree there, is it healthy, is it, uh. Are there any particular problems with that tree? Uh, if there's not a tree there and, and planting is the question, we know how big the space is, whether there's wires. Uh, there's just, the plan has a lot of information specific to every site in the village and it does save a lot of problems. So, um, the, uh, I, I, I don't know exactly, uh, where you want to go with, uh, a, a tree proposal. I would encourage you at least to, uh, consider, uh, looking at information that you already have. And then perhaps, uh, formulate some specific questions that I might be able to, uh, address. There's no point in doing another plan unless there is a use for that plan. And, uh, I, I want all of your work to be as efficient as possible and that's, uh, but I, I want you also to know that there is a service available. And for a complete plan for a, a village of this size, I don't know how many miles of street, I don't remember how many miles of street you have, about six or nine?
Four, I thought.
Six, not like six.
Okay.
Is it under six or six point one or something?
Something like that, it's like five, one or six.
Remembering six, but I, I, I can hardly remember anything.
He is a Bruce.
But, uh, at, at any rate, the, 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 the cost of, of doing a complete plan would be less than five thousand dollars. And because you have a lot of information, uh, that could be tailored. So I'm just, tonight, I'm just introducing the idea of, of a, a tree program and maybe do you have some questions?
Bruce, you said there, that when we did this in nineteen ninety, we had what, five hundred?
We had five hundred sixty trees, yes.
Okay, when Mr. Plots did his with my wife in nineteen seventies, it was over nine hundred trees. And we know that it's gone down since yours in nineteen ninety seven.
And it will continue to go down because you have a lot of trees, large maples that, uh, they're, they're dated, are numbered and they're not being replaced. And they haven't been replaced for years, so, I think it's inevitable.
And the, on the, in regards to trees in general, and I look at it for curb value, I look at it for aesthetics, uh, for helping people with the value. One of the problems that we had with the tree plan was that we adopted the program and then refused to give any power to the people to implement it. And, uh, so that it became contention that if the people didn't want it that in their front yard, they could have it cut down. And one of the things I found in the correspondence here was actually my wife's resignation letter in two thousand and one. What she pointed out was she adopted a tree, the village adopted a tree program, then refused to abide by it because it was up to the individual landowner. Even though they might not own the tree, but they wanted it down, so basically her statement was, basically, at that time she says you have four hundred and seventy five different tree policies in the village. If we're going to do this for the village, and we're going to unless Bruce's, but has to be a long term, not a short term commitment. Otherwise, we might as well take the money out and let it street, set it on fire and burn it.
Right.
And, but, we need to have a continuity, if we're going to do a tree program, we need to have a continuity program. And we need to have a three year, five year and ten year, uh, perspective on this because we're not gonna be able to put all the trees in in one year.
Right, absolutely not.
And, uh, we need to go through and see what we've got left right now, cause, uh, he had all the maps with all the trees on it. Imagine you can go in there with a magic marker real quick and say, well, that one's not there, that one's not there. And, uh, so, uh, that, that is a concern. In regards to Bruce and his services, how many acres do you manage for?
About two hundred thousand.
Okay.
A rural.
And what villages do you other?
Uh, we have, we have fourteen villages. Currently, we are, uh, we are arborist for the city of Warren. We have, uh, uh, we're, we do regular work for the village of Westfield, uh, village of Lakewood. But we have developed plans for a number of other communities, forking other communities. The, uh, um. We can be available, uh, at whatever level is necessary, uh, whether it's just simply answering a few questions or looking at every situation. And we can be very flexible in that regard.
And how many people do you have on staff?
There are four, four, I'm not a big company, but, uh, we get around.
And do you guys specialize in, uh, like, within the plan, like, how to set up, okay, this tree comes down, it wasn't in the right place because it's right next to the curb. So the salt that in the road's gonna eat at it, so. Where to put it, cause that's the biggest thing, when we were coming up with, talking about a tree policy, is replacing them and so, whether it's in between the right of way that the village has access to. Or if it's on the individual's property and half the time, people like us are saying from what John was explaining to us is that people aren't so receptive of the trees, um, for whatever reason. And so how do we, in, how do we have trees so that continues to help with, well, air, I mean, the qual, the benefits of having trees, you can go on and on. But how can we, are you able to create a policy or come up with some type of policy that gives our superintendent the authority to say, this is how it works, this is where we're doing, this is where we're planning it here? And so also that a tree doesn't be considered as a gift, um, that was another thing like the attorney brought up. Uh, if it was put on their property, then they could be considered a gift and obviously municipalities can't do that, there's a lot of.
And what you're really asking about are, is, uh, developing an ordinance, uh, for the village. And, uh, that's a little bit different from a tree program, but an ordinance may be very well where you need to start. Uh, an ordinance, uh, uh, identifies the, the rules that guide a tree plant. And, uh, and an ordinance, uh, should address, uh, the right of way that the village is responsible for. It has not been very successful in any place other than on Long Island to have plantings done by easement onto private property. And that is, so we don't recommend getting into that, it's very complicated. It can happen, it's just that your attorney is not gonna go for it. I know that. But, uh, but it, it can happen that you, and through an easement, uh, and the tree is purchased by the landowner, uh, and it can happen. But what we're really talking about is the right of way, uh, between the sidewalk or, uh, the street edge to the, uh, right of way that is the responsibility of the village. And, and, uh, uh, in some places, there, the, an ordinance doesn't even identify what area that is. So, that, it, uh, there's the whole gamut of, uh, individual control is the worst situation. Where, uh, and I will say universally, people do not want trees until somebody else has trees. And in every community where we have done a plan, the initial response was to, we don't want the trees and pretty quick they're calling for trees because somebody else has a tree. And the program is really what makes that more visible. And so it doesn't bother me that people don't want trees, I mean, and they don't want trees because they're, the gutters are full in the fall and, and so they might call up to have a tree removed. But, but when their neighbor gets a tree, they would like to have theirs replaced. And it's just, that's universal, I mean, it's happened to every community. So, uh, an ordinance, uh, can be very specific, uh, as to, uh, whether, uh, the village covers all of the cost of, uh, planting a new tree. Whether the homeowner would share fifty percent of the cost. Uh, in the city of Jamestown, uh, the tree ordinance allows for, uh, uh, the amount of cost sharing depending upon the need for the tree. In, in some areas, for example, where there's high, uh, rental, um, absentee landlord, uh, none of them would ever sign up for a tree. Uh, but, uh, if the stocking level of the street is less than fifty percent, the city will pay the full cost of planting that tree in those areas. A street right next door might be seventy five percent stocked, so it doesn't qualify. But the ordinance is how you deal with that rather than arguing from one neighbor or another.
Are you familiar with Elicitville?
Yeah, we did a plan for Elicitville.
Cause Elicitville, I look at that, they're very jealous of the. Because Elica Bill, I look at that, they're very jealous of the trees.
They are.
Because that's part of the ambience of what they're selling. And I think that they've done a very, very good job over the years to keep that certain one and protect their seeds, what, senior citizens.
Just one example, in Elica Bill, the kind of benefit of having a plan, when, when, what used to be Niagara Mohawk, but now the National Bridge, when they're coming through to do maintenance, they're watched pretty closely. But the benefit is that they may remove three or four trees in their work corridor that were scheduled for removal because they were poor, at no cost to the village. And, but that can only happen because of the plan that exists. If we have, in the village of Wellsville, for example, they have budgets, they could remove twenty trees, but there were over a hundred that needed to be removed. So what do you do? You know, how do you, how do you set priorities and so on? And the plan can help you to determine that kind of schedule. In the city of Oleen, they actually floated a bond issue when we did a plan for that, and raised money to remove the trees. And by removing all of the trees that had to be taken out, there were, like, we found eighty-eight large dead sugar maples, larger than twenty-four inches in diameter. Twenty-four, I mean, eighty-eight of them that were dead. And because of, by doing all the work at one time, they were able to remove them with a crane at less than a hundred dollars apiece. That did not include the stump removal, but that's pretty fantastic because the average...
Does that ring a bell, Tom?
The average, the average of that was, at that time, was over four hundred dollars a tree.
One of the things that, we look at our village, which has been dying for fifty years, and one is economic development and such. The other thing is, is in regards to the tree, is there, I could see a program where we had a flowering village, you know, flowering trees, if that could work, and it could be sustainable or such, so that it also becomes an attraction in certain respects.
Yeah. The, because we have so many problems with trees, I mean, there's no site in the whole village that's good, that's perfectly good for trees. So the trees are always at a disadvantage. And so diversity is probably very important, rather than having one tree wiped out because of a beetle or something like that. And, but if every community was an arboretum, we could certainly...
What's that?
An arboretum, which is a collection of trees. And the emphasis could be on many aspects, flowers, fruit, whatever. And so it is, it is very possible to pursue something like that. But when you think about most of the large trees that were here, they were simply dug from the woods or a field and planted on the streets here. And now, a hundred fifty years later, they're hurting. And there's lots of them that are in that condition.
The other thing is that we use salt on the roads.
Right.
And that's got to be very costly, got trees that would change.
But you have, Catararas has an advantage of, the uphill slopes are still suitable for maple. But down, it's not. And eighty-six percent of your trees are maple. Or they well, or, I think it was, I mean, it was a very high figure.
And now it's probably dead maple.
That was, yeah, I'm sorry. Eighty-two point eight percent were maples when we did the inventory.
So we want for more of a diversity, we spread our risks of survival.
Exactly. And you have, you have few oaks, for example. But oak is the most tolerant of salt. And when we have specific problems, we can assign a tree that would be suitable for a difficult site. And we want to, at the same time, guard against, you know, simply because a ginkgo is a tree that can tolerate tough sites. You don't want to have only planting ginkgos. You know, I mean, if you're trying to develop a plan, and it can be very complex.
Are, is there any product that's made? I guess like a blanket of some sort or a shield of some sort that you can, like, for winter, just for winter purposes, put around the tree to prevent salt from getting into the roots and corroding it?
Not really, because the salt is going to, when you have, let's say, a tree lawn, that entire tree lawn has roots. These big trees have to go someplace. And many of these trees have roots that are a hundred feet long. And so we tend to think in terms of being, doing something close to that trunk, but really, it's many, many, many feet away where you're really infected. So that becomes almost, almost impossible.
So you'll be able to help, though, with a policy ordinance and all of that, though, to help make this a, I guess is the term where it's used, is a flowering village, once again? Or get on the path to...
That would be, certainly that would be a goal. And I would be the resource person for that. I'm not sure that you are ready for a new plan or need a new plan, but I do think you, you might want to think over the next few months about having a subcommittee or something just to start looking at what can we do? What should we do? I'd be happy to meet with anybody. And at some point, we can make a proposal for when we want something done. Right now, it's just mostly informational.
The other thing that we have is we're passionately replacing and upgrading our sidewalks. We have an aging community that depends on those sidewalks. And some of the older trees have heaved the, and that's cost them their life as a result of it. So if we put in new sidewalks, we would like to know that we can minimize that upheaval from the tree that we put in there. And that would be a factor, I think, that we look at right now.
Well, yeah. Yeah. You've got to, you know, you've got to consider all that. I mean, you can't, I mean, in Sunzai worked here, you can't plant a tree back or you're taking one out either, if they don't grow. I mean, you grind a maple root, maple stump this big, he grinds it four inches, five inches below the ground, you've still got a base in the ground, and that is sour forever. Well, you can't dig down deep enough to put a tree in, but it seems like if you get on one side, the other try to plant a tree, it just... The ground is, the, the riding of the stump itself will kill a tree that's tiny one. You can plant a tree within, and look, it just, that ground is so sour, it just, they'll, they'll temper it up in the well. They just won't grow. So you figure, if you grind a stump this big, you can't plant. Now you're getting in, there's another tree over here, there's a driveway here, this is where, you know, it's where it's nice if you can kind of get on the, on the opposite side of things and go. But if you plant it within that, anyway, you can't. I mean, you can dig the side and try it, but usually, they just don't make it.
Well, I won't, I won't argue that. I know that's how difficult that is. And yet, that's the only options available most of the time in most communities. And if you are willing to work with a ten percent tree loss, that's, that's about what we work with in that situation.
I mean, some places, you try to tree down, and you can move, you know, on way or another to it. But in some places, I mean, well, Angie Hogan's the one who took that one down there. There's no, where that tree come down, her water service is here on the edge of it. So you really don't want to plant one there. Her driveway is here, within about four or five feet of the water service. Here's the old stump. Here's a fire right here. Neat.
And a tree in that situation would probably be identified in the plan as not one to be replaced. And that's, that's the value of a plan. And we're not trying to, we're not subscribing to the idea of putting a tree wherever we can put a tree. There are right places. But I would say that every site where a tree is, is somewhat of a compromise. I mean, it's just not a forest situation. And yet, we can tolerate certain failures. And one of the most successful aspects that we have found is planting bare root rather than bald and burlap. With the bald and burlap, there's enough soil on that ball that when you dig the hole and plant the ball, the roots choose to stay in the ball. They don't, they won't go off. And as a result, that tree will die more frequently, more than once.
I'll get one shot.
But, but the bare root tree, you're actually planting much shallower. There's sometimes as much as three hundred percent more roots because when they dig them, they just go underneath and raise it up and shake the dirt off. And so you're planting many, many more roots. And that's more effective in these difficult sites than a bald and burlap tree. If you make a really good site for a tree in a difficult setting, the tree will probably not survive. It'll choose to stay right within the ball.
So essentially, now, what we need to do is we need to create a committee? You said you would...
Or a couple people. If, I would do whatever. I don't think, my intent is, again, informational. I would be happy to work with a committee or DPW or however you want to proceed or not. I mean, that's, it's your call, obviously.
Would you, if we contacted Elica Bill, do you think they would be a good resource for the ordinance?
Probably so. There are, there are a number of communities that have programs that are still struggling with the ordinance. And the biggest obstacle in a community that does not have an ordinance is identifying who's responsible for what. And, but it is, it's one of those catch-twenty-two situations. You know, you can, the village can say, we're not responsible for the tree because it's the homeowner that's responsible. But the village probably picks up the leaves. Probably if that tree fell down, you would pick up the branches. And legally, that commits the village to more than what you think you're responsible for, often. And that, I mean, that has, that is one of the urban forestry facts, I guess, that you're responsible for more than you think you are. And when you don't define that, then the landowners, you just, it's so frustrating to go out, to cut down a, or to, because someone has requested the removal of a tree because they don't want the leaves, and across the street, there may be a tree that is totally dead. But because nobody reports that, it doesn't matter. But my point is, that still exists as a threat. And what we want to do is, is have it clearly defined by ordinance what the village is responsible for. And it will save a lot of problems in the future.
Any other questions?
Any thoughts, John? This is primarily your department on how we're going to have this be managed and all of that.
I get people, stopping every once in a week, they want trees down. They want trees down, they want trees down, they want trees down, and this as well. And roughly a thousand dollar tree, and that money is pretty well spent in the determination how a tree comes down and how bad it is. There's ten more that could be coming down tomorrow, they're that bad, in my view. I mean, right now, it's prime time. You look at them, there's no leaves left. There's branches like this, if not bigger than the top, they have no bark on them. It's not too hard to tell, that's why I didn't get it done. There's the guy from the cemetery, the day he wants two of them down. The guy down on South Street wants that split-leaf maple down in front of his house. It's not a bad tree, but it's a split-leaf maple. They're, they're not prone for wind. And a storm or anything like that will split and fall just for something to do. It's a large tree, and it's leaning right towards its hovels. But I totally admit, it's in better shape than others. We've got to, you know, I mean, if we've got to set up a committee to where we can figure out what's, you know, fair and right, then I guess that's what we've got to do. And I guess that passing the judgment out of that group instead of one person, but...
Right.
I mean, I don't have a problem. I mean, it's... And do we have to plant and make things look better? Whatever, as long as it's feasible and within the reins of things, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Really appreciate it. Oh, do you have a card?
Not with me. Yes, I have a card.
Okay. I'll get the address, just to... For everybody.
I just forgot to bring it in. Thank you much.
Thank you. Nice seeing you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
Where's me take here?
Are you talking to yourself?
I'm doing it.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
Maybe, maybe. All right. So it is, it's eight seventeen. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the proposed water law. And anybody present that would like to speak? You have three minutes. Mr. Pastorella?
How come you're listening?
You gave me a listen? Tom? Okay. Moving on.
Can we close that, though?
No, we'll wait till the, after we're done with business, then we'll close it and then propose to pass it. So then, the next portion of business is the old element here. My and I can work on it.
Rose?
Do you keep that? I'll, I'll make it work.
Well, can I get a, no, both mine died.
Sorry, do you want that? A lot of nails, a shoe was lost. A lot of a shoe, a horse was lost.
Right.
A war was lost.
Before we get into all business, I'd like to make a motion, take a quick recess.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, Gary, you're approved. Let's be quick for, for...